Welcome to the Holyoke Public School Committee's regular meeting. It is June tenth, Monday, and we are opening up the meeting at six ten P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Lefave.
Present.
Mr. Romero. Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Here.
Dr. Caballero Roca. Mr. Wellerhand.
Here.
Mr. Collamore.
Yeah.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
And we have our student rep from the Holyoke High School Dean Campus. If there is no objection, we're not going to move into the the Pledge of Allegiance as we just did it ten minutes ago with our public budget. So I'm just going to go ahead and move on to the same spiel that we say every week, every every meeting. So on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The Act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter twenty-eight of the Acts of two thousand nine, section seventeen through twenty of the Massachusetts General Laws that a regular meeting of the Holyoke School Committee will be held on June tenth. I wasn't supposed to read that one. I don't even know why I did that. I really liked the whole page. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, I hereby, this is the one that I I needed to say, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the city of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channels. So with that said, we're going to go ahead and move into our student showcase, which is none other than McMahon School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen McDermott. I am the principal at McMahon School. And tonight I am very excited and proud to share some of our art from McMahon School. And just to give you a little background information, Emma Pascarella is our art teacher at McMahon, and she was a first grade teacher at Sullivan School. And when she asked to become an art teacher this year, we brainstormed ways to bring different content areas into art because she has such a vast knowledge. So she brings in E.L.A., math, music, everything into her art classes. They are amazing. There's music playing all of the time. There's books being read all of the time, and there's art happening all the time. So it's really awesome. So I wanted to take a minute to have her share some of the work with some of our students.
Thank you for inviting us. Like Karen said, I'm Emma Pascarella. I've been part of Holyoke Public Schools since twenty twenty, right at the pandemic. And so I've been a teacher since two thousand and five in elementary schools across the Northeast. And my background is in art. I studied, almost was a major in art at Smith College, but then found education my senior year and really just found a way to put everything together. And so when the opportunity came to become an art teacher, I was super excited. So we focused on the elements of art, the basics of art this year, and looking at different artists through history, through a variety of cultures around the world to make sure that everybody could see what art can bring to the world. And my primary focus was making sure that children had a voice and a choice in how they wanted to present their art. I taught them how to use materials. I taught them how to apply different elements, and they created what they wanted to within the materials that I taught. So we began the year with self-portraits, and we concluded the year with self-portraits. So I have some of these end-of-year self-portraits. Did you want to start, Cora? I know they're a little nervous. I didn't realize we were going to be on TV. You want me to hold it? Okay, so this is Cora's self-portrait. And tell us what you concluded in the background.
Hello Kitty.
Yeah, you love Hello Kitty, right? Do you remember what materials you used, Cora?
I used Sharpies.
You used Sharpie, which is very exciting. And then how did you get the red?
I used tempera paint.
Did you like making the self-portrait?
Yes.
Thank you for sharing, Cora. Here's some other self-portraters. Second, so Cora's in first grade, Kayden's in second. And you were inspired by an artist. Can I hold your beautiful piece? So this is Kayden's beautiful artwork. And do you remember the name of the artist who inspired you?
Who inspired me was Yayoi.
Yayoi Kusama, right, in her dot? So tell us what you used. What's your what's your favorite material?
My favorite material that I used is paint.
And what what is it about this that is very Yayoi Kusama-like?
That she loved to use circles. And to me, I love to use circles too, so I used it like her.
We have a third. Okay, so this is Michaela's self-portrait. And Michaela, you used a lot of materials in this. Do you remember some of the materials you used?
I used I used paint.
Yeah. And then what?
Oil pastels.
You even used finger paints in this, too? Yeah, so you used mixed media for this, right? Lots of different pieces. So why did you choose these elements to to show in your self-portrait?
Because they're stuff that makes me happy.
Yep, and you're a happy girl. Look at this, amazing. Thank you, Michaela. You did it. And the fifth grade presenter we have, I twisted her. She's my daughter. These are the self-portraits. These are the self-portraits. So we're starting with self-portraits. So this is Winnie's self-portrait. Here, you want to, you're tall. Yeah, you're tall. So do you want to tell us about how you created yours? What did you start with?
I started with painting, like my skin and my hair. And then I ripped up a magazine and put it, it's collage. Because there's things that I feel like describes me, like I love these animals and I like lots of colors, so I.
Throughout the year, we looked at the different elements of art and created projects based on them. And so when we studied texture. There. What did we what did we do to study texture? Can I hold your beautiful weaving? Here, you want to sit down because you're tall, too. All my rest of my friends are tall. So what did you make?
I made a weaving.
And is it just a blanket or what did you create?
So so like for the back, I used oil pastel. I was trying to go for like where there's nighttime paintings. At the back, then at the front, I started weaving. I got help for the for this, like.
You created a loom, right?
Mm-hmm. And I got help for this part. And then the rest I did by my, I did by myself. And I chose these colors because I think they just really suit me.
Bravo.
Natalia worked, asked to keep this when she didn't have art and worked on it and finished it even when we weren't having art that week, right? When we studied form, we used clay. And Charles, the fifth graders aren't as excited to to talk. But in this, we had a we had a tragedy happen. It did break in a couple of pieces, but we'll fix it. But you chose not to create a form of something. Do you remember what type of art that is?
I used abstract art to make this because I didn't, I wasn't really thinking of anything when I made it. I just put a bunch of clay pieces together and put a lot of different colors on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really fun to make.
So, you know, trying to create a situation where even if you aren't, you know, a self-proclaimed artist, you can still find ways to express yourself. So that's our showcase. We might have, oh, we have a.
That is a picture of me in a city and it's nighttime. And I picked the nighttime and there's buildings, and I made a street to look pretty. And it was on my glasses and and my pretty dress.
Beautiful dress. And Grace, you were one of the first first graders to fill the space, right? Why did you choose to fill the space?
So it looked like it was actually a city.
Thank you so much for sharing.
That was awesome. Is there any comments, questions? Mayor Garcia.
Just simply to Emma, thank you. Good work. Thank you for the time and work you're putting into these kids and all our kids and for sticking with us in the school district. You know, obviously, we talk a lot about it, how important art is. We don't really, like, these are the things that the public doesn't get to see in what happens in our school district. And you just kind of gave us a little bit of a taste of what does go on in our school district. And obviously, I just want you to know how much I appreciate you doing what it is you're doing and for sticking with us, sticking with our kids here in the city of Holyoke. And to the parents of these kids, thank you as well. Very much again, like, it's it's a lot of work here. A lot of us at this side of the table, we are fighting hard to really, you know, try to understand what make what, how we can make our district the best that it can be. And we hear a lot of rhetoric out there in our community about our school district, but there's so much good that's happening that people don't get to hear about. And, you know, obviously, we have teachers like Emma and the parents that are out in our audience that are a testament to what we have to offer here at Holyoke Public School. So thank you.
It's such an important piece of learning and just creates, you know, we talk so much about hearing student voice and student agency, and it really is just such a natural opportunity for students to express themselves and to dive deep into the learning that interests them. So it's a it's an absolute pleasure to take on this role.
Good job, kids.
Mr. Kennedy.
First of all, good job to all the students who came up here and talked. I have been in this position for three years, and I still get anxious talking. So good job. Also, I was, I went to McMahon School for nine years, K through eight, and my favorite class was art. So I'm kind of, I'm glad to see that it was continuing and that students still enjoy it just as much as I did when I was there.
I know I saw some hands. Mr. Collamore.
Yes. First of all, thank you very, very much for coming here this evening and bringing these wonderful children here to show off their art. And we really appreciate it very much. I know over the years, our budget thought very carefully about cutting this, cutting this, cutting this. But you know, our city of Holyoke, we had the diligence to work things out and keep these things in the budget. And it's so important, not just not just for the students here, but our whole community to know that these things are going on in the city of Holyoke. And I'm really proud, I'd like to thank Mr. Soto and our director for coming up with an excellent budget. And I'm very proud of all of you.
Is there any other comment? Ms. Tensley-Williams and then Ms. Wilson.
You guys sparked my interest. I'm an arts and crafts person. So maybe I'll come over to the school and show the kids a few things. Thank you for coming. Oh, we love you all so much.
Ms. Wilson.
So I think it's interesting how not just the beautiful artwork, but how they could speak to the artwork. Talks about how you're incorporating not just the creation, but the education around the art, which is an essential part, knowing it's mixed media, knowing what type of painting you used, you know? Why did you fill the space up, things of that sort? And I really want to acknowledge the fact that you were teaching the entire student around art and using such a wide variety of methods. And I think it's wonderful that you're incorporating content as well. So thank you. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Yep, we can go ahead and clap. Thank you so much. And Coraline, somebody was really happy to see you this evening. Thank you again for coming out. And great job, everyone. Was there any public comment submitted electronically? I see no one has signed up. Nope. Anybody here for public comment on anything on the agenda? Nope. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to communication and reports. Student reports. I don't see a representative from the North Campus. So we're going to go ahead and move in with the Dean Campus of Mr. Kennedy.
All right. First things first, campaigning continues for student government for school year twenty-four through twenty-five. Elections for the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades, student government will be held this Friday on June fourteenth through a Google form that the government advisors will only have access to. And their leadership will start the first day of school next school year. The ninth grade student government, however, will be elected in the fall, and the winners will be announced June twentieth. My campaign sticker's on my laptop. Our eleventh grade Argument and Rhetoric students took a class trip to Salem, Massachusetts last Friday with our teachers Kate Sandimerzki, Matt Begley, Brian Cannon, and English coach Kaylee Berger. We went, yes, we went as a part of our unit on the crucible to learn more about the Salem Witch Trials. The trip was a massive success, and we hope we can do that for future classes as well. The Equity Team has raised a flag for Pride Month. All week, they held Infinity Circles for the students during lunch and other fun activities. Final exams are this week with half-days Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, as well as next Monday, which is June seventeenth. And last but not least, on June twelfth at five thirty, CTE will be having its end-of-year celebration with the PAC and GAC to discuss successes and feedback for the future of career and technical education.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? No? All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on. I don't have any reports, so we'll move on to the Superintendent Receiver Reports Assessment Platform Change.
Yeah, and I want to invite Rebecca up, Rebecca Thompson up, if that's okay with the School Committee. Is that all right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm here reading the. So do we have a motion to or to suspend the rules and allow?
Make the motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion to suspend. Hearing no objection. Go right ahead.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to provide an update with some new developments that have come up for next year. You know, one of the things that we wanted to do, or one of the things that we are going to do is we're getting rid of the ANET platform as an assessment tool. And and that's based on, you know, we've had it for a couple of years now, and we've been getting a lot of feedback on 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 the use of it. And, you know, reflecting on that feedback led to a process that Rebecca Thompson led to make sure that we're, you know, we're using the right platform and that it's it's one that's going to help really support teaching, be responsive to to students and what they can do. And she can, you know, it's in your packet, the the process that we went through, the platform that we're going to. And I'll just let Rebecca speak to that.
There we go. So the letter is in your packet, the memo that shares all the information. So I really am here to answer any questions that you may have. We ANET served us well for a couple of years, but we could certainly use closer alignment for our students and for our teachers. It doesn't feel good to sit with an assessment where you maybe haven't been taught those standards yet or as a teacher, feeling like these scores aren't where I I want to see them be, and that's because I haven't taught it yet, but my students had to take this assessment. So the DNA platform within Renaissance, it offers a few things for us. One, it offers us alignment with STAR. So all of our student data, like STAR offers our screening, our progress monitoring, and we'll be able to build a comprehensive system using the DNA platform within the same thing. So it's ease of use for our students to be able to more easily access and for our teachers to be able to see all of the data in one place and utilize that. STAR, Renaissance and DNA, the DNA piece, they are custom building our assessment. So we've given them our scope and sequence documents rather than trying to adjust our curriculum and how we teach to fit an assessment that's being given. They are custom building based on our schedule of assess, you know, standards that we're we're teaching. In addition to that, this offers for our teachers a streamlined piece. There's banks of thousands and thousands of questions. So if they want at any time to create a quick two-question assessment for our students, that will be easily scored and graded right in the system. They can do that to like dipstick a standard. There's also ability to take an assessment from, for example, illustrative math and upload it right into. So it could be a unit test that goes right into the DNA platform, and students can take it there, having enhanced features such as drag and drop, like they'll see on MCAS, more exposure to those pieces where typically we don't have that ability and and our students don't get a lot of exposure to that throughout the school year. So it allows for customization. It allows, it's also, and I don't know, but fiscally responsible for us as well. So our ANET contract was quite high to build our custom assessments with DNA. It's still an initial upfront cost, it's still, but is less expensive. The difference is after they're built next year, they go right into a bank and become ours. So if we want to make any adjustments to them, modifications, because teachers have reflected and think, well, I I actually would like to teach this in this particular order, they'll be able to make those adjustments, and we don't have to, we own them. We don't have to pay for further customization or anything like that. So there'll be a bank of resources. It's all in one place. It's streamlined. Another key feature is that our interventionists will use use this often to progress monitor. So a classroom teacher will be able to see when they go in for both their, the the initial STAR piece where we're progress monitoring, doing our screening, and the DNA piece with standards. They'll get a comprehensive view and be able to see what an interventionist has progress monitored in the results there. So it really is making for a more comprehensive, streamlined, ease-of-use piece. It's not adding any additional testing. I sat here earlier this year and presented the district-based assessments make up less than one percent of time on learning for students. That's not changing. It's the same amount. It's three times a year that our students will take the interim assessments in the DNA platform that are common across the district. And then their teachers can use it, as I said, for all of these other purposes that help inform instruction within the classroom.
I know we have a question from Ms. Wilson.
Yes. So I'm wondering how, first of all, I I appreciate the fact that interventionists can use it for progress monitoring. Does that also apply to special education teachers could do some progress monitoring as well?
It does. And our Pupil Services Department is bringing in new curriculum for all of our special educators where we haven't had it in the past. So there are progress monitoring pieces built in, but they can absolutely utilize STAR as well.
Okay. And then secondarily, you know, while the the time for a student to take it has not changed, I'm just wondering, is it, how do I want to say this? More user-friendly for educators to dive quickly into the data rather than spending much time with little benefit from? And I'm going to say that that's from my personal experience using ANET. It wasn't very user-friendly on the educator end.
So this is a lot more user-friendly, and I think we we could have waited and taken our time to transition, like, over the course of another year, used ANET for one more year. And because of the ease of use, because it's in a platform, our teachers already know how to navigate. We know this won't be a really heavy lift. And in real time, you can start to see the distractors are right there. It's it's very easy to access those pieces.
Great, thank you so much.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Now, the district assessment, you said three times a year. Four times would be quarterly. So do you know which month?
Yes, we have a full assessment calendar built out. Additionally, we've always put out an assessment calendar that has, here's the the range of dates that you have to give this assessment within. We are building out a full assessment plan, a comprehensive one, that says, here's the assessment. Here's why we take it. Here's how we utilize the data so that we can be able to see those. We have the the date bands already identified for those interim assessments.
Can we get a copy of it?
Yeah. It's, it should be on the district website, but I can, I can share that certainly.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
First of all, thank you for listening to the feedback. ANET was not popular with almost any person I ever talked to in the Holy Public Schools. So I'm excited about that. But I'm sure that there was a reason why we picked it in the first place. I'm not saying that that's the case, but that wasn't the case. But definitely, I'm excited to see it move to something. I, one thing that I want to highlight is that ANET was a lot like we're the golden standard. These are the things that you should do to allow your students to get to where they need to be. And Renaissance, and this is just by scanning both of the websites and everything, right? Taking time and kind of like looking through, because I'm a nerd and that's what I do. The Renaissance DNA felt like they trust the teachers more in what they should be assessing, and they're just providing the tools to get you to do that faster. We'll see what the teachers think afterwards, but at least from, I can see how making this move makes sense. And also, my question, that is always the question that I ask Mr. Soto, what is the plan to assess? Is this the right move? Did it really work?
Yeah, I think we're sitting here today because it's a commitment to respond to that. Like, we could have very well said, like, let's give it another year. And, you know, in fact, I was very much like, what? When I first heard this. And, you know, Rebecca was open and honest and said, Anthony, in good conscience, like, like, why wait another year? Like, we have to do this. It makes sense for our teachers. It makes sense for our students. And I immediately supported that and said, like, we have to make sure that we bring this to the School Committee. So like, I, just like that scenario, I, you know, as long as I'm in this role, I'm not going to do something that that doesn't make sense. And we're always going to listen to feedback. And we're always going to include the School Committee along the way. And we're always going to collect feedback from teachers. And sometimes that just means, you know, what what I like about this platform is it really adapts to what our needs are versus like, ANET was ANET, and it was there, and and that was what it was. You know, so like Rebecca just named it, if it didn't align to our scope and sequence, if it, you know, there were, sometimes kids were getting assessed on standards that haven't been taught yet. We actually have the ability to customize it. And there's a heavy implementation at first that that involves like giving them what our curriculum is so that then they can build out the assessments that are aligned to that to that curriculum, which I really appreciate. And actually, it was stuff that came up in this committee, right? Like, you know, you know, how come we're not using assessments that are right from our curriculum? Like, I I remember that comment specifically. So, you know, we're, you know, I I would say that we are going to take this this really seriously. We're going to monitor it closely. And and my goal is to just make it better every year. And if it's not the right tool, then, you know, we have to, we have to evaluate that and listen to our teachers and listen to what people are saying and 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 make decisions that, you know, that that sometimes are difficult. You know, I say that because this is going to be a huge lift on Rebecca and Rebecca's team. And there's a whole implementation plan. There's a lot of professional development. The good thing is, is our teachers are comfortable with the platform already. But Rebecca. But Rebecca is acknowledged, like, I wouldn't be coming to you and telling you if this wasn't the right thing because it's actually a ton of work for me and a ton of work for our team, but it's the right thing to do for our teachers and for our students.
Thank you, and thank you so much, Rebecca.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, Mr. Kennedy. He has a different light to it.
Superintendent Soto, I know you've been getting, this is like the second meeting in a row that I don't have criticism. I know, it's, it's a new change, it's a change. But thank you very much for this, Ms. Thompson, for, for your work on this. I have been, I think openly against ANETs and the testing that goes on in this district since my time has started on this committee. So I appreciate that you are responding to words from students, from teachers. And I have not looked at it personally, but Dr. Rivera-Cologne said that it puts a lot more, it's much more teacher-focused, which is a huge thing. Because another thing I've said is that often the teachers don't feel like they have a whole lot of power in what they're teaching. So if that really is changing, then thank you very much and I appreciate all the work that is being done.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions, comments, thank you again for coming up and, oh, Superintendent Soto.
I just wanted to respond to Evan. Evan, please don't ever feel like, look, your, your voice is important on this body and, you know, regardless how people feel about whatever you're saying, like, don't ever filter yourself. I never take it, you know, like, there's going to be things that we don't agree on, like, you know, I, there's definitely going to be things that I don't agree with all members of the school committee, but it doesn't, it, it doesn't, uh, doesn't mean that you can't express yourself and, and say those things. So don't ever feel like, you know, you have to provide praise to me or that if you are providing criticism that I'm going to take it personally. Like, I, you know, I have some really good people who are around me making what I believe to be the right decisions and, and they're putting in a lot of work. And some people may not agree with it and some people may have different opinions. But, you know, at the end of the day, the one thing that I can say and, and it's grounded in, in everything that I do is that students are at the center of every decision that we make. And this is based on that, yes, it, it is another assessment. It's not like we're eliminating testing and I know you and I will probably never agree on that, right? Like, I, I do think, you know, I, I have a, a son myself, he's 12 years old, he's in middle school. And I see the amount of stress that he, he is on when he, he has an assessment or when he has. But I appreciate that, I love the fact that he cares deeply enough that it affects him and that he wants to do good. And, and as a parent, I have to be there for him and talk to him about those feelings and tell him why it's important to, 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 you know, to have that, like, that competitiveness in him that he wants to do good. So I, like, I do appreciate, you know, what this does and, and, you know, I don't, school is not about, in, in my opinion, and this might not be popular, but it's not about making, just making things easier. Like, life, I tell this to all of our graduates, the most important thing that we have to do is teach you how to deal with hard. Because life is hard, it never gets easy. And it might not be what you're learning in ELA, it might not be what you're learning in math. But what I like about those things is that it gives you problems, you have to think about how to solve those problems. And when you're done with that, you're getting better at solving hard things. And life is going to continue to throw those things at you. And I think, like, like I said, it's one of the most important things that we teach students how to push through, persevere through hard. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, we're going to go ahead and move.
Thank you.
We're going to move to new business, 5A summer programming for HPS. It was an FYI, just so you guys were aware. What are the different programs that are available, by when families should sign up, especially to ensure that transportation? My, Mr. Wallhand.
Thank you, yeah, this is a topic that I was kind of bringing up during the COVID years, whether, you know, even the summer school should have been mandated. I wish it could have been, I think I asked that question that said no. So, you know, I, I think it's important that we have these programs. Did we provide transportation last year or in the past for these programs?
Whenever, so we provide transportation for, for anything that's required as part of the extended year program in a student's IEP. So like, whatever we're legally mandated to provide, we do. And then other transportation is provided based on availability of funding. And we've been in, we've been in a position due to the, you know, our extended learning grants that we have, our 21st century grants, that we, we've been able to provide tran, uh, some transportation.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, I like to make it easier as possible for the parents, you know, just promote this program. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Our spots filling up pretty quickly that...
Yeah, we're, we're, you know, we're monitoring the registration. We do anticipate, you know, a, a good enrollment this year. It's been positive, we're, you know, we even have folks from other districts and charters trying to join the, those programs. But we're obviously prioritizing and, and making sure that anybody that is in Holyoke Public Schools is, and, and that is interested in applying that they're, they get that opportunity. And, you know, staffing has been, has also been going well. Like, we're in the process of going through the hiring process. And all the reports that I've gotten, both on registrations and staffing, has been positive.
Um, so even with the special education and other services, so speech therapy or whatever, are we, are we good with that? Are we still foreseeing that there may be some lapse in services because of staffing?
Not, not as part of the summer programming, no.
Okay, and then my last question is, are we doing the, that summer meal? Uh, meals at the...
Yes, we're going to be doing the summer meal program across the city using our, the food service truck that we have.
Okay, Ms. Tensley-Williams.
I'm going to make this quick. There was something that Mrs. Soto said, excuse me, in the May 28th meeting that we had, budget, proposed budget. And some of the things he said stuck out in my mind and I just want to say it. Says students, number one, it says, students are at the center of everything we do. Every child can and will learn. Student, our school is a joyful place of discovery, support and belonging. Students and staff hold high expectations for themselves and each other. Trust in relationships lead to successful partnerships. Our equity commitments are enacted in our daily work. That stuck out in my mind and I really needed to repeat that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So hearing no more, we're going to go ahead and move into 5B, school committee policies. We, I'm going to pass this over to the Superintendent Soto.
Yeah, I, I asked to add these to agenda simply to have the discussion in subcommittee around these two policies. We, we have, and there's subbullets underneath that. So there's a policy around student fees and fines that I found in our school committee policies. And there's a policy around vandalism. And the reason I bring that up is because we have a problem, like, you know, the reality is, is that, you know, we're, we're making significant investments, almost $2 million in our Chromebooks to make sure that all students in grades K to 5 have brand-new Chromebooks next year. And I think that we've been, we've had the luxury of, and I don't even want it a, a luxury, but we have been blessed with the ESSER federal funding and have been in a place where I feel like we've gotten way too far away with holding students, making sure we're using this as an opportunity to teach students responsibility and taking care of, of, of their own property and taking care of school, school property. So we've had a lot of discussion about making sure that we, we, we actually start really applying these policies in practice, both with two things. One of them being the yonder bags, which, you know, the, the old model for yonder bags was that we had one fee for the contract and it didn't matter how many bags got broken or lost or stolen or whatever the case may be, we would just send it in, they'd send the replacement. And the new model is actually costing the district a lot of money. So when, when, you know, we actually have to pay for each individual yonder bag. So I see this, you know, we're, we're, we're having a lot of conversation at the district level about accountability amongst ourselves and about making sure we're following through on the things that we're saying we're going to do. You know, I hear from members of the community and from some of you, you know, when it comes to, I, I hate to use the, the word accountability, but, you know, making sure that we're, 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 we're upholding our responsibility to teach kids right from wrong and, and teach kids responsibility in addition to everything else that we have to do. I had the opportunity to meet with our student cabinet as well. I brought our middle school cabinet and I brought our high school cabinet together here in the dean campus and we were able to break bread in the culinary department. They, the culinary students cooked a meal for, for us and this was the one agenda topic that we talked about. You know, next year, we want to make sure that, hey, we're, 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 we're holding ourselves a little bit accountable to like, both the student devices and the yonder bags. What do you feel about that? And the overwhelming majority of students just felt like, yeah, that's the right thing to do. But i- if we're going to do that, like, you know, it's not fair, you know, that the device that I get is not the one that I'm using every day, like 10 different students use it. So how are you going to hold me accountable as a student to that device? So we have to come up with a process where like, each student gets a device and, and, you know, at the beginning of the day and it's the same device that they're getting every day. And around yonders, there was some discussion about like, sometimes they're cheap and they break by themselves. In no way is this ever intended for like, if you accidentally break a Chromebook or accidentally break, uh, you know, a yonder bag, like, you're in trouble. It's really about teaching students responsibility. And these two policies allow us to, to go back to that. And I want to make sure we have some rich discussion in our policy subcommittee about making sure that we have the support of the school committee to move forward with that. I think it's the right thing to do, I keep hearing from teachers, it's the right thing to do. I've heard from students that it's the right thing to do. And, you know, this is one of those things I'd like to move forward with, but also along with all of you.
I was, I was just trying to tell you that I was trying to click on that restitution draft summary and it kept giving me that error, so it's just that we, I couldn't, can't pull it.
Oh, I can, I have it.
So you were able to...
I'm able to get into it, yes.
Okay. So, the, Ms. Wilson.
So, you know, one thing when I was looking through this, I'm going to be a stickler and say it uses the term policy under Holyoke Public Schools, grade six through 12 Chromebook. It's, um, so just again, want to clarify that the school committee is the only one can develop policies. The district itself is creating procedures, guidelines, things of that sort. My first question is, what changed with yonder where we were going, you know, with the fact that we had replacements all the time and now it's limited and now we're being charged for everyone? What, what happened?
It's just their pricing structure, that, that's on them. Like, when we, when we went to renew the contract, they, they basically let us know that their pricing structure was changing. So, you know, we, we want to extend the pilot to next year, but after next year, we really got to make a decision as to whether or not that's, you know, that yonder bags is something that we want to continue. I still, you know, there's still, uh, you know, no cellphone use allowed in school, in classrooms and stuff like that. It doesn't have to be yonder, yonder is just a tool that helps us enforce that. So there are other models out there, right now, we want to continue with the pilot again for next year. There was a lot of lessons learned in, in the current year. And this, this, this being one of them, like, personal accountability on, and, and, you know, making sure that, that students are taking care of, of their property.
What's the cost per yonder bag replacement?
Uh, is it 20 bucks?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, you know, when reading through the, um, the procedure as to check in and check out, it seems like it's going to be a time-consuming process for someone to review every single device on a daily basis to make sure that there has been no damage. So who is going to be doing, doing the inspection and will be, will it be in front of students? So they cannot say, well, so that they have to own their accountability, let's put it that way.
Those are details we haven't worked out. So like, we have to have a check-in, check-out process. We haven't, we haven't designed what that looks like, but we got to work with our deans of management and ops and our school leaders to come up with a plan. But ideally, you know, a student would come in, in the morning, either to a community space or to their homeroom and they'd, they'd take their device and they'd have it with them throughout the entire day. So they'll be able to, as opposed to like, what we do have right now is there is a Chromebook cart in every classroom and students can access it. And, you know, sometimes they'll go access it and some of them are broken, we don't know who broke it, any of that. So like, with this, I think what students appreciated most is like, this is my device, it's going to be the same device every day. But those hard, the, the hard part about this is how do you navigate that when kids aren't taking it home? It's different in a community where like families sign either an insurance policy or they, you know, they sign a contract with the district and they get a Chromebook at the beginning of the year, they take it home and do all that, like, we're not, we're not there yet. Eventually, that, that would be a place where we could go, but we have to, we have to start somewhere. And, and I think this is a good place to start, like, kids get a Chromebook, they keep it during the day and they turn it in somewhere. But especially with middle schoolers, it's going to be challenging because, and, and anywhere we're departmentalized. So I would say anything third, fourth, fifth grade and above, you may start the day in your homeroom class, but you might finish in gym class. Like, how, how is that process going to look like? When do you turn in your Chromebook? Do you end a class five minutes early to go do that? Do, do we have a community space for that to happen? So those are some details and logistics that we have to work out.
So I just want to remind you...
We're, we're just getting a follow-up on the cost.
Oh.
Brand-new $30 for a replacement cost for a yonder bag.
So these items were put on for a vote to refer to policies and governance. So is there a motion to refer to policy and governance? So I have, um, I have a motion by Mr. Collmore, seconded by? Ms. Tensley-Williams, any discussion, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
The question that I have for you, Mr. Soto, um, don't you have something like, it may not work for the lower grades, but a signing in or a sign-out sheet, whoever took the property, they need to sign for it. And when they turn it back in, like, somebody inspected, they turn it back in, it's in good shape, turn it back in. Because if you don't have a sign-in or sign-out, you won't know who, who broke it or whatever, who had it last. I mean, that's simple, but...
I think that'll be addressed when, when there's only one student that has the device, right? It's not, right now, Evan can go from one class to the next and he, he might, depending on how many periods are in the day and whether or not there's devices being used, he'll get like four different devices in one day and then tomorrow, they might be completely different devices the next time he goes in. So like, what we're trying to do is move towards, you know, at the beginning of the, you have an assigned device and you check it in and check it out. And some of the details that you're asking about, Ms. Tensley-Williams, we, we have to work out.
Mr. Kennedy.
I was just going to add to what Superintendent Soto said. Yeah, like, we can, we have, we take a different computer every time we go to a class and often when we do that, like... we don't have, we don't have time. We have to grab the computer, we have to sign in and then we have to start a lesson. It takes us like five to ten minutes just to get into the computer um and to get to where we need to go. So it's not really efficient to take a computer, sign it out, go in where we need to go, and then before we end the class, sign it back in. Um so I think that this this idea is feasible and uh definitely more helpful, but as of right now, there's no like sign in, sign out process, cuz that would wait um it wouldn't, it wouldn't be timely.
Hearing no further discussion, um all those in favor to refer both policies ECAC vandalism and JQ student fees fines and charges along with subcategories restitution draft summary and draft copy Chromebook yonder procedure. To policies and governance, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna go ahead and move on to ongoing business. Um if there's a motion to take
I can make a motion to take as a group.
Take as a package. So approval of the meeting minutes, um we have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by by no, she wasn't doing, uh seconded by Mr. Wallahan to take uh five thirteen meeting minutes, five twenty eight school committee meeting minutes and five twenty, the school committee's special meeting minutes. Um any discussion? Dr. Rivera Cologne.
I wasn't here for the five thirteen, so I'm gonna abstain for that one.
That's okay.
So if we could take that one separate.
So you wanna take separate. Okay, so is is there a amendment to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a minimum to take them separately.
Second up.
So now we have an amendment to the motion. So on on the amendment, any dis-
Five thirteen separate, but the other two are still together.
The other two will be together. That's the amendment. So on the amendment, is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Wallahan. Any discussion? All those in favor on the amendment.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, any any? No. I even just lost track. Okay, now, take a vote on the motion. Which is now is to take a vote on the five thirteen
Thirteen.
School committee meeting. Now I'm mumbling. Now I need a motion on the five thirteen school committee meeting.
Make a motion to approve the five thirteen twenty twenty four school committee minutes.
Second up.
Have a second by Tens- Ms. Tensley Williams. Any discussion? You know, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Like to make a motion for to uh
One, hold on one moment. You wanted to abstain? Okay, say it. Okay.
Abstain.
Okay. So we have one abstention. Um now, motion to
Motion to take five twenty eight twenty twenty four and the five twenty uh school committee's special meeting minutes to approve.
Is there a second? By Mr. Wallahan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Nope. Mr. Collmore, did you wanna say something on the meeting minutes? Okay, so
Uh I'm just getting it clear in my mind, people abstaining. Get me wrong, but you cannot abstain unless you give a reason for abstaining.
She did mention it. She wasn't here on five thirteen. So she did, that's why the the motion was separate. The motion was amended to separate the five thirteen cuz she wasn't present. Okay. So we had our motion. We had it seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So motion on the five twenty and the five twenty eight passes unanimously. We're moving on to ongoing business, updates from subcommittees.
So I would like
Policies and Governance Subcommittee.
Sorry, I started jumping in before you acknowledged me. I apologize. Um so if the committee's willing to, I would like to have a meeting um soon. Uh so I'll be in touch with uh committee members. Um we have to follow up on items, proofs of minutes. And we could begin discussion of uh the two policies that were referred.
So will you be reaching out to the
I will be reaching out to the subcommittee members um on a date and then notifying the entire committee of the date and it would be held downtown um at the district office.
Thank you. Uh next is the Finance Operations Subcommittee, um Mr. Wallahan.
Thank you. Well, we just had the budget here tonight, so that sorta, that sorta wraps up the fiscal year. Right? That's self explanatory. Um the minutes to approve tonight, I'm gonna have um the minutes available for the committee approval from our prior meeting. Um that's it for now.
Okay, great. And is there uh a motion to accept the Subcommittee Meeting Minutes? From three eight for the Finance and Operations? Have a second by Mr. Collmore. Any discussion? All those in favor to accept the three eight Finance and Operations Subcommittee Mini- Meeting Minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the Joint City Council School Committee. Um I am passing it over um the chair to um Mr. Collmore. Uh the meeting will be held though on June thirteenth at six thirty in City Hall.
Thursday evening.
This Thursday.
Thursday, at six thirty at City Hall.
Six thirty at City Hall. And um all, there's been back and forth on the agenda, um but I think we finally got it packed out. So that'll be going out to to the committee. Um is there anything else, Mr. Collmore, that you wanted to share?
Nothing else.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee Meeting. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Nothing to discuss, just our meeting is scheduled for June twen- twelve twenty twenty four, six thirty, same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and now moving on to the Local Control Subcommittee, Dr. Rivera Cologne.
We had a great robust discussion today about collaboration and hiring and evaluating the superintendent. Will have um some work to do moving forward offline as well. I would like to bring forward the for our last two meetings, so four eight twenty twenty four and four twenty three twenty twenty four. The last one, the one for four twenty three was just um fixed for typos that were in there, but the content continued to be the same. So they're ready to be voted on.
Alright, so is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the local subcontrol for four eight and four twenty three? We have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to vote to receive and accept the fiscal year twenty five proposed budget that was presented to us on May twenty eighth. So this is just to vote to receive and accept. Is it, do I hear a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Collmore, seconded by Mr. Wallahan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a lot of FYI information for you, attendance, chronic absenteeism, referral, discipline data, middle school building update. Um are there any questions on the above three? No, I do have one. It's just on the absenteeism, attendance and chronic absenteeism. I it's really sad to say, but Opportunity Academy is really hitting us hard when it comes to that. Um is there any way that it could be like a separate separate identity in the sense so that it is really dinging us and this is like a second, it's like a second opportunity, a different alternative type of pathway? I don't think that we take um the the attendance rate at um Lighthouse and that accounts into ours, nor others or or other students in out of district placement. But here in this specific one where this is where it's not, it's not like I'm saying that they have to be there every day because that's why this was created. It was to give some flexibility, right? But now, like, this is, this is what they focus on in the state. Absent, attendance and chronic absenteeism, and here's our numbers, right? Forty three. How do you expect this to come down if though there's one especially that it's like ninety six percent? Ms. Wilson.
So I'm wondering if we can actually uh approach someone um at the state level to discuss this and how um it really is a very mixed message the state is sending our students and our district. On one hand, uh we should be engaging students who have left and uh find out different pathways in order to get them back on track to receive their diploma. And yet, it really is, um just like you know, Vice Chair um LeFave said, it really is hurting our numbers. And you know, the easy thing we could do is just stop having this opportunity. But we would never do that. Because that is not the right thing. We're here for our students primarily. But I I I I would, just the same as you, I I would like to see if there's anything we could approach um the state to discuss this.
Anybody else? Mr. Mr. Collmore?
I'll make a motion that we refer this to committee. And come back with some
What committee?
Whatever committee you decide.
Well, Superintendent Soto, have you, have you ever had discussions about this with the commissioner?
The reality is, is that Opportunity Academies is like, is part of Holy Oak High, just like you know, just like Dean is a part of Holy Oak High. Like, we present the data. We have the ability to present the data thankfully separately, but um officially at the state when it comes to accountability. Opportunity Academy, Lighthouse, um and uh and and Dean and Holy Oak High are all one school. So the only thing that I would say is like, you you kinda hit it on the head or and Ellie kind of uh really made the point that, you know, the this program is designed to target students that are overage and undercredited and historically, when that happens, um they they drop out and this is a pathway that gets them to not drop out and instead to um seek an alternative pathway to graduation. So if, you know, in in the scenario where, hey, why do we keep this program? Like, we would definitely see our graduation rate dip and our dropout rate spike. Um and that's, this is one of the main contributors to 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 having a stronger um uh a stronger dropout and and graduation rate. Um so it it, you know, the challenge is really to 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 make sure we're trying to get as many kids to engage um on a daily basis at the Opportunity Academies. But guys, you know, you guys are right. Um when you look at that data, there, you know, the the majority of our students over there are chronically absent, but they are on a path to 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 graduating.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think the benefits of having the, you know, the program outweigh any negative data points that were that were shown to state. Okay, so that's, that's my first point. So um you know, chronic absenteeism, that's statewide. We all know that, you know, through the data, you know, the uh the DSC representatives, they they know that too, right? Um I know the neighboring towns around us, they're all uh they're struggling with the same, same thing. Hadley, Hampton, Ambers. Um I saw where a Ambers school committee person said, ten percent, it's no big deal. And and one of her colleagues said, that's eighteen days. Eighteen days is of absentees, that's no big deal? Eighteen days, that's a month. So your your student is missing a month of school and it's no big deal? I think the person should be held accountable for that, that statement. You know, so um it's just, you know, as we as we say, you know, just um, you know, the COVID and the world has changed, trying to get it back, you know, gonna flip it, flip the switch again. So um just hopefully that um we can just make the positive changes to get the numbers back up. I think the more parent engagement, I know uh our our mayor is um involved with that, just, you know, getting getting the parents involved, uh emphasize that, you know, having the children in class is to everyone's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Just wanted to show, Mr. Kennedy.
Um when we talk about like students, like you said that this was like a path, an alternative pathway for those who fell off the track to get their diploma. So I think that if this hasn't been done already, I'm sure at some, at some level it has, but I think that we really need to evaluate what we're doing to get them back on that track. Like, if they're missing X amount of days in school, I'm gonna go back to my sixth sixth grade ethnic studies class, use the root to fruit tree, but why? Right? Like, why aren't they coming to school? Is there something that we could be doing to get them to come to school and get get them on the right path? Is there a path that you're pushing them towards that maybe isn't the right path for them? Um I'm sure it has been evaluated, but I think it maybe could use a little more extensive evaluation to maybe like, you know, see how we can best benefit the students in that program.
Yeah, thank you. I I think, you know, anyone that has gone to a graduation of Opportunity Academies understands its uniqueness. So like um Evan, you're you're right, like, it's it is very unique in that every student at Opportunity Academies is is different. And the reasons they're there is different. It could be, you know, um I wanna drop out to work. It could be, I'm a young parent and it doesn't work for me because I need to take care of my kid. It could be a very wide range of reasons why they're seeking that alternative pathway and part of the Opportunity Academy program is that it, it has to be, uh if kids gotta wanna go there, it's not like students are placed there. Um I think there's only been one scenario in entire time of of oper- uh Opportunity Academy's existence where a kid was put there. The rest of it is very detailed conversations with the students and the families as like, this is an option that could work for me and could work for my kid. And here's how we're gonna tailor a pathway to get you to make up the credits and complete the credits and walk across the stage. And oftentimes, that that means working at their own pace and coming up with you know, between now and June, I wanna get this many credits. What do I have to do? And um that doesn't necessarily always involve like showing up Monday through Friday and doing XYZ. Might involve something different that is accommodating to that students. But you guys are all right that, you know, this this does look bad when, you know, but there's there's a reason for it, right? Um it's it's taking students like that that need a different pathway and um sometimes need a different schedule. Um but we still have to, you know, to to Evan's point, we have to figure out how could we make how could we make the program more engaging and and make kids wanna come more? So that um, you know, they're, they could be on a much faster path to graduation, right? Uh that's the, that's the beauty of of the learning at Opportunity Academy is is the pace can be as quick as the student's willing to put into work.
Mayor Garcia?
The graduation for Opportunity Academy is this Friday at ten AM over at the War Memorial. And if if you are able, definitely, well, I was gonna announce it under announcements, make sure you guys are there. Um and if you are able, um it's a great opportunity to see exactly what Anthony is talking about. That the program is it's 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 doing miracles. It's it's a a segment of our popul- we gotta, you know, the reality in our district, we're a very compassionate city and and there are a level of quality of life challenges that are creating all sorts of social determinants of health issues uh in our community, which forces us to constantly think creatively in how we're navigating these issues and meeting the needs of our most vulnerable population. And OA is is an example of that. And you know, like Soto said, if if this program didn't exist, um I think we'd still be struggling with do have our um absentee problem and do have our, um, absentee problem and the district has this whole initiative and campaign to try to meet that. We're, we, we would be looking at a, a higher dropout rate and, and a very different path carved for, um, uh, our kids that are, um, choosing to participate in the OA Academy. Um, so it's, it's just, you know, it's, it's just one of those things happening in our community of many, um, that, you know, we have to continue to put our heads together and, and bring resolve, uh, but also understand, you know, the community that we're living in and the level of compassion that we offer that, that creates the environment that we're in. This is the, the business that we're in right now. Um, and so we gotta continue to try to, you know, be mindful, um, just like what Mildred is, is the Vice Chair here is bringing up a very valid point. And, and we shouldn't forget and need to continue to figure out, um, but also understand like, you know, at what cost sometimes. So it's, it's, it's one of those tricky things. Um, but I, 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 I give a lot of credit to everyone who's involved with OA, um, helping out, um, this segment of our population and trying to get them on a, on, on some sort of a path that would otherwise be very different if it didn't exist.
So, and I guess I just have to clarify a little bit of what, if this program was around when I was a teen mom, I wouldn't have dropped out. I would have gone here, right? And then I would have actually had a diploma and had that opportunity. But this wasn't around. So I'm very grateful for this program because it's for students like what I was, right? Um, that unfortunately I had small children that I needed to take care of, couldn't be coming here, falling asleep, right? Plus I had to work, provide for them. But then it became about, I, this program, it's giving them that flexibility to map up, map out how they want to eventually get to that graduation, to that being able to walk that, that, that stage. But it's at their pace. That's why I was bringing it up is how can we then create a program like that that then doesn't become connected? Because at the end of the day, although we're doing something that I would never want to, to stop or end, it does still affect us in the overall aspect of accountability, right? We've just been talking about accountability, right? That was why I had brought it up. Obviously, I'm not saying to ever end this program. I think that would be a disservice to every one of our students, plus those who we've lost that we can potentially gain back, right? Um, so that, that was it. Sorry. Never bring it up again. I'm gonna go ahead with the chronic. We're going for fifty percent next month. We'll have a hundred percent next month because there won't be no schools. Everybody's chronically absent.
No, there'll be a summer program in extended year and students will be there.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Mildred, I will say though, that it would be amazing if there was a way to collect data about absenteeism that focused more on the learning rather than the body in the room. Because if you could actually have learning happening, that's why we care so much about absenteeism. Because if you don't engage with the content, then you're not able to learn what you need. But for students who have and need a different path, if there was a way where we could still ensure that learning, whether you are in the classroom or not, then that would be a way that you could still be present and not absent because you're still gaining the knowledge, even though you may not be physically in the building. So that's something to think about, like different creative ways for those students as well.
Absolutely, Ms. Wilson.
So those creative ways were in effect during COVID. Um, those creative ways where students engaged, um, in learning. Um, I, I, and I think, and I will say this, I think our state did a disservice when they took away that opportunity for students to be able to learn at home, let's say even on a snow day, uh, when it's inclement weather. Or let's just say a student is hospitalized and they're absent and we send home work with them. And they're still being counted as absent even though they are engaged in learning when they're hos- you know, through hospitalization, that is part of their day. I think our, our country, our city, our state needs to look at things a little differently. And I believe we're gonna have to, as a country, look at education differently at least in, minimum in five years, based upon the number of vacancies across our nation with educators, providers. I think it's going to be shifting how we educate our students. And let's be clear, it's not just about how we're educating them, it's ensuring that they have the knowledge to go forth. So a student can be present in class and still not be educated that day because things going on, social emotional needs, various things going on, but their body is there and their mind is not. So we need to look at things a little differently, I believe, going forward.
Thank you. So, um, out of school, out of state, field trips. We have the Kelly School, Connecticut Science Center, and Lawrence School. It's just FYI information for you guys to know. There's no student activity approval needed. Uh, announcements? Mayor, you wanna hand out the announcements?
I just have one.
Okay.
Was I supposed to have others?
Wanna go down the line?
Well, the only, I, the one that comes to mind, obviously, it, June eighteenth is our joint meeting with the City Council to, um, elect, uh, replacement um, for the at large, the open at-large, uh, seat. So what I'll plan to do, Mildred, tell me if I'm wrong. We're, so right now, our Personnel Department is, um, collecting all letters of interests. Friday, we'll distribute to everybody. We'll, Callmore will make sure we, we get your hard copies. Um, but just know that like, you know, folks can, you can vote for the candidates that submit a letter of interest. You can say whatever name you want, as long as they live in the city, um, the day of. Um, but at least, you know, you'll get letters of interest ahead of time. You can review candidates. These candidates will encourage them to be present at this joint meeting so that, um, you can do interviews. Very similar to how we got the doctor on board. Um, so, um, yes, so June eighteenth, City Hall, Council Chambers at six PM so that we can put in our votes. Six thirty? Six thirty PM?
They put here. But the other thing is they can even come up into that day.
That's what I
Um, so you might not get everybody's resumes and letters of interest because especially when it comes right to the end, like, let's even say the night before, somebody submits something at nine PM, I'm probably knocked out. Okay? So I might not even see it until the following day when I'm heading into the meeting. So I may not have been able to pass that on, forward it to you guys. We're all gonna learn about them that day. So anybody else have any questions, Ms. Wilson?
So I would, you clarified it because I wanted to see if that had changed.
Nope.
So it's still open until we actually start the meeting so anyone can seek out that seat.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
We learned that clarified in the process, there is, the person that gets in will, will complete the seat until next election, which, so we had originally thought it's to finish the term. So it'll be till the next election. Whoever gets elected will finish the term, if that makes sense.
So what it is, is the person who comes now, they're gonna be appointed into that seat until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Whoever wants the remaining two years that will be left, because it's a four-year seat, will have to then run to be elected for the remaining two years. It could be the person who gets appointed. Um, and then next year, and the election, that's gonna be like a little special election because we can't confuse because now it'll be both at-large going up. So who's that, the way that it's written has gotta be written correctly, even when they're picking up papers, because that's a special seat. Um, because that one will only hold for two years. And then two years from that, they even run again for the four years. So that's how that would work. Mr. Kennedy?
Um, a question for the Chairman or Vice Chair, um, either one of you might be able to answer this. Uh, I am not an elected, sworn in, or member of this board, and so I won't have a vote. But will I be able to sit in and with you to, uh, observe and interview the candidates?
I mean, I've, it's never been brought up. I don't remember if I
I say yes.
But he's the mayor.
Okay.
Well, we'll make it be known the day of, and I'll let the councilors know ahead of time.
The council.
So, no problem.
They might even do, you know, um, anyways, I can't remember the words now. Motion to suspend the rules, that's right. Okay, so further announcements, just the Deepak Meeting is Tuesday, that's tomorrow, six PM. We also have the Middle School Building Committee. That would be you, Mr. Collmore, on the twentieth at six PM. Right? Because you were appointed to be Chair for that. Okay? And, and then the last day of school for HPS is Friday, June twenty-first with a three-hour early release. I'm sorry, what?
Aaron's still the Chair of the School Building Committee.
Darren's the Chair, but Mr., but Mr. Collmore now has a voting position.
He now has a voting position, yes.
Okay, so Ms. Brunel remains as the Chair of the Buildings, School, Middle School Building Committee, um, appointed by the mayor. But you will be the voting member for the school committee on that seat. All right, hearing no further announcement, is there a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Ms. Tensley-Williams, ooh, Tensley-Williams, seconded by Ms. Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I doubt it. Motion passes, uh, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-three. Have a great summer, everyone. We'll see you in, uh, August.